What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at defending the blinds against steel positions specifically, I wanna look at three bets. So, we're gonna have a little bit of like versus raise call. Uh, but it's mostly gonna be like big blind or small blind defense and I wanna focus on the combo with three bad versus the combo we call. So this one here open call back on us. It's not really what I wanna do today, but I think this is a call.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, marginal.
Don't we mostly threw at the offsuit combos from the from the big blind versus the late positions?
Just keep mixing some of the offsuit.
Yeah, you mix and then there was multi way.
Oh, we're eighty.
Oh, it's multi way.
That one, that one was multi way.
Alright, let's see here.
One might find a three that occasionally.
At eighty big blinds.
Yes, I shouldn't say anything I'm climbing.
Yeah, I'm not three betting very much on this area.
From this deep anyway.
I think this has some.
I'm not either, but I think I can, yeah.
It this has some, but I like to call with this against a button.
I love it's a heavy tree back.
It doesn't really get better to fold, but it does get worse to call.
Okay.
Maybe some king X.
The range.
Some of their shitty king X fold. And some shitty queen X, but for the most part, it's just not getting much better to fold, but worse does call.
Alright, so I had like queen Jack is well in there. Then our good old King five, King sixteen, seven also face and it's the boomerang. We're gonna work on that.
I I I don't see this as boomerang, I see. Like when you're deep, you have the suited connectors. So this is like suited connectors, suited one gappers and then it touch outside.
It's a boomerang though, shape. Sort of. From the H three down, down the other line. Hey.
This one might be just for some board coverage, like we don't wanna three bet the suit at get four bets, so we choose queen Jack off and then on queen Jack boards or when it like runs out of Broadway board, we have the queen Jacks.
Let's raise most of the time here, let's raise to seven point five five most of the time.
I'm just calling.
Pretty sure we're too deep to check raise.
Yeah.
We're most mostly call.
Yeah, blow the pot with one pair.
Oh, wow.
Check raise.
I was just calling since I don't have many worse queens. I didn't think any, I didn't think it did with stack depth. I mean, you wanna build pop with your best hands, we're gonna have check raises.
That's right, this is our best queen when we flat call kind of our second best queen.
Oh, I thought you three bet.
No. I went with that smooth call.
It's it's still mostly just calls.
Nope.
Some raises.
Mostly raises. That's mostly raises.
Huh?
Fifty-four percent is more than forty-four, forty-six percent.
Yeah. And then does it raise more with the speed? Yes. A little bit.
Um. After getting called, I think we I think we check.
No, we don't. The seven pairs.
But yeah, either one probably more the small.
Okay. That's small. Oh, and now it's the good old, I realize that.
That's the pot.
Board. And we're gonna restart. Alright, do we wanna three bet with this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, this has some three bets.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think so. I mean, I think it's a
Majority three bet.
Yeah. Thing is, we just saw the boomerang, it was a little bit lower. So the deeper you go, the
Well.
Boomerang.
This is also against the cutoff. The last one we saw was against the button.
Yeah.
So it makes sense that it moves up, up a little bit.
Okay, so Jack nine, Jack eight, Jack seven. Alright, deep stack three bets.
And this sucks.
Uh, well, it doesn't really suck. I mean, there's an ace, there's a game. It's pretty good. So I think we should, we can see bet a lot small.
Yeah, take a stab and give up.
Monotone makes it that we want.
Out of position, do we do two?
I kinda like two, yeah.
Oh.
I don't, the problem is with this hand, we don't get a lot of fold equity for two. And we kinda wanna one and done. So I might go six, but in general, I like two on this board.
So I'd say six or twelve. Twelve seems a bit risky with the monotone, so I guess six.
Wow.
Yeah, the reason why I wanna go up, there's two high card, it smashes our value. When we have it, the range kinda wanna do that, but in general on monotone boards, you don't really size up.
But is that is that in position or is that also the same out of position?
That's still out of position.
Monotone boards in general, in or out of position, you tend to keep the pot small. Um. For the first bet at least, depending on the nature. Like here, we have the ace and the king out there, so it's not like it starts at the queen, right?
And this one, there are just no, there are virtually no small bets in this range.
Yeah.
So I was way off this.
So let's have a look.
Yeah, I didn't know this. I don't know this one here at all.
So overall, we bet a lot. What is the overall percentage?
Were we a hundred effective? We were, right?
Yeah, so we bet sixty percent of the time out of which.
That'll drive the size up.
It's mostly big bets or. Okay. Uh. Is it though?
Oh.
What was the checking frequency Louis on the flop?
Forty percent, we bet sixty percent of the time and we only bet small twenty-five percent of the time. That means thirty-five percent of the time we bet kind of big. Back to the
That's across all board.
Yeah, across all boards. Let's look at the texture just for fun. So low, we mostly bet big. Let's look at.
Go to filters under reports.
Hang on. Oh, yeah. Filter reports?
No. You see where where reports is just below that until the right is filters.
Okay, so we can look at what I wanna look right at the back.
Yeah, that's why I was, it'll just give you all the monotone boards.
All the monotone board, so you bet small across every monotone board. But that's like just Justin Saliba in the new master class, he talks about that precisely when the ace is out there and the king can size up because you're gonna have low flushes that are kind of weak.
They're almost all Broadway, like three Broadways mostly.
Yeah, two Broadway is monotone.
Yeah, no, that's when you get three Broadways, it pushes it back down.
Yeah.
Ah, he's king queen.
Also, this, this is a function of the
And ace, queen, jack, ace, jack, ten, all those pushed down.
This might be a function of his range too, because a lot of his a lot of his flushes contain a high card. So when there's like ace, king or ace, queen, ace, jack, monotone, that blocks a lot of his flush draws or flushes.
Alright, so here, these are all the fair boards. Uh, on fair boards, let's just see quickly. Majority big bets on fair boards.
Out of position.
Twenty-seven percent bet small. Like forty-ish percent big bets.
Out of position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out of position as the three better.
Um. Okay, so pair board with the nays are not so fun though, but all the other ones are. King, seven, seven, range of that thing.
Yeah, we got a lot of high bets for pair boards too.
And we're alter deep stack, which I think is in general drives up the size, right?
Yeah, but it also seems to have a link with whenever the seven is fair or the eighth or the ninth. The nine not really, right? A little bit less, but whenever it's the seven or the eight. Uh, whether it's a king eye board, queen eye board. Uh, these are the spots where we bet the most, Jack eight, eight, Jack seven, seven.
And it seems like the lower the pair.
The ten, ten boards, we bet more.
We bet more, but it's still the in on the ten eye board, the spot where we bet the most, it's ten eight. There is a link with paired eight or paired pair of seven. Oh, what did I do?
Oh, if you click on it, it brings up that exactly.
Oh, wow. Nancy.
I accidentally found that out the other night.
So pair eight, pair seven. It's really good for us. Fair board in general is pretty good.
That is that just because we have more trips in range on those?
I'm sorry, then?
Is that because we have a lot more trips in range than them on the paired seven and paired eight? Are we like three betting the Jack seven suited and stuff like that and they fold those out?
Yeah, actually, we are very happy to betting suited sevens and suited eights.
And I look at his call range, see if he's deficient of sevens and eights.
There he is.
Yeah, he folds the sevens and some of the eights.
Yeah. Okay.
Pretty logical.
Yeah. Worth a little note, I think. So big blind versus four of three bet four. Uh. Best pair of boards for us are eight, eight, six or seven, seven, eight because we three bet a lot, uh suited seven and eight X and he doesn't defend much of that. Alright. Ace five off, we could get him a little shot. What did you guys say?
Yeah, I know it's in there sometimes. I don't know if it's in hijack at a hundred.
Ninety ten, ten percent.
No, fold, fold.
Is it not?
It probably starts getting in there at a six D big blind.
It's the last second I remember, we don't VP any aces from the small blind. Except for ace ten.
Yeah, I'm just one pip off. One position off. Okay, so did we do it? Okay, let's screw that, let's move on. Oh, he falls. Ah, yeah. Okay, suited eight. Not tender, right?
Yeah, we already know it's in there cuz that's from your last note.
Let's drop it. So I think here we wanna bet sixteen or ten, I think ten is gonna be the right size, but I would go
Yeah, I think it's one of those.
Uh, nine eye board, when you have a
Quarter pot.
Well, now the the highest frequency is really like a blast that.
He he has the RNG on say, you pretty much have to ignore the double check mark.
Yeah.
Just look for the highest frequency single.
Yeah. So yeah, you wanna bet big on nine eye boards because of how your pocket ten or ace nine or king nine is gonna wanna play kind of and these hands surrounding, I like playing a lot like pocket Jack.
Can you take off the RNG thing, so?
I do not know how easy, does it bother you?
It took off the other day. I don't know why it's still on.
It's on modes. It's like if you go on settings, it's on modes. But it's
Oh, no, Louis, you don't show, you you click on RNG not enabled, that's where you do it. RNG mode off. There we go. That's the important thing, not whether it's not whether
No, it's still there.
Yeah, but don't, but it's not, it's not, it's not active.
Not blue.
Yeah. Yeah, it won't change the check marks.
Yeah.
Is this in the tree bed zone?
Oh.
Maybe versus cutoff button. I don't think versus hijack. I even call or fold.
Can call or fold?
I think it's
Nah, it does three bet a little.
It's never
Versus, I use it versus cutoff and button. I don't expand it to the hijack.
That's one thing, like I know some of those middle kings are in there, but I never know which ones at which times.
When in doubt, king six.
Yeah.
That's how I feel.
Okay, so suited lines and okay. And not really any bluffs, right? Suited aces, suited eights. Suited eight, suited nines, some suited aces. Okay, so say we three bet this time. Calls, we get I think it's a good board.
Yeah, completed equity, so we're gonna bet small probably, right? Five something, whatever that second.
Yeah.
Because of the complete completed equity?
My guess.
Maybe eleven because they're still, it's not, it's not rainbow.
Yeah, I like eleven.
Maybe eleven.
There's a flush draw, there's two high cards. It's gonna be tough to get a king to fold here.
It doesn't, it doesn't go real big because it already has a straight available.
So maybe I don't think
I like eleven as well, cuz we're deep and what you guys said.
Not eleven, like like Ken said, uh. How did you phrase it, Ken?
Just completed equity on the board.
And completed it.
Even though we block it a little bit and we have outs against it.
Did he fold? Yeah, he did, right? Okay, pocket aces, I think I know how to play this. With three bet? We see that the small.
This board.
Small seems fine. It's pretty hard for him to have much.
Nope.
Also big.
Like flush draw boards, we can size up a lot, right?
Yep, and we like to have
I thought aces would play a lot like queens there with the just a small bet.
How often is it checking? Oh, not much, huh? With the spade even?
Yeah, it looks like twenty-five percentish.
The aces?
Yeah, it's checking twenty-five percent.
Okay.
It looks like it's just a mix to cover to cover all the ranges where most of our sizing is gonna be. To put aces into almost every grouping except the really large where the kings are.
How do you structure your bet strategy here? Okay, so for these kind of easy, false spades. Right? Or thunder or backdoor hearts. The kings, so these they just get better king to fold and some inside to fold, the same goes for these. But these have extra wheel equity. You bet big with a pair of five here. Well. Cuz I don't do that.
And least of all with when you have the spades.
Yeah. Alright, so why is this strategy shaped like that? I don't get it. Only bet half of the time, it's like I queen eye low, low. It's kind of dry of a board.
Well, we don't, we don't have a ton of strong queens.
Well, also out of position, we always have a lot of check raising.
Queen high is pretty good for the caller usually.
And the check raise and the three bet pot is the aggressor.
Yeah, we're in a three bet.
Definitely out of position, we always mix our aggressive action between betting and check raising.
Okay, let's, let's look at that real quick, check. He's gonna bet super sweet, small. We have a lot of raising. I mean, we do raise many. Yeah, thirteen percent. Just
Almost eighteen and a half percent.
Oh, thirteen percent, raise eight in the size.
It's a bigger size too.
And then it's five point three.
Five point three for twenty-six.
Oh, I didn't see it. Oh, yeah. So yeah, Tim is right, we check raise a lot.
We're polarized around like ace, jack, ace, king, they're better. Can check raise for value, hands that are worse, can check raise as a bluff?
So so either you blast with these five or you chick raisin. That's funny.
Yeah, I bet when we do that, we get some mid pairs to fold, we get like pocket sevens to go out of the way.
Probably, right?
He like thought he was cleaning up his equity, buying some protection and then we would show him the bad news.
Scam him a little bit. No, he doesn't know. We raise small, he's not.
Yeah, I
he is not, but are people doing that, you know? And check raising the three bet bottom, not sure if I'm looking down with sixes all the way.
I guess that's five for spades, right?
Yeah, but it's doing it all suit combos.
That's right.
I was asking
dollars, almost zero. Okay.
Five, four, real quick. How about that?
Five, four, this, wanna go all in with zero spade?
Just a spade. Nope, don't wanna do that.
So we are polar here because of the flush draw. What else?
We unblock the queen.
Well, he also ha, he should have a few um, straight draws in his range too.
So like in general, we check a lot.
I was thinking about the straight draws and trying to figure out how aces interact with them cuz you, of course, we block, he's do say four pretty hard. So then he's left with like seven, six sometimes.
So what what I see is the queens are betting, when they bet though, they're betting small. So I guess we're not polarizing our queens that much, ace queen, we are, but over to the queen are going for it. When your king X, ace X. The match. And then the bottom of your range. So like five, four, yeah, six, five, seven, six, that's just your like super low equity bluffs. Alright.
We're just turning it into a bluff, I guess.
This one's hard to pick up a heuristic cuz it's kind of betting all over the place with every hand grouping.
Well, you're polarizing your aces and kings and you're matching that with your draws, with your ace, X and king X draws and then you're just pulling from the very bottom, it looks like for
There's a a deep stack concept here, which is that when you're quite deep, you have to worry more about board coverage. So I think the solver is trying to protect itself against a wide variety of turns. And I know that's like part of why you check raise some second pair, you know, like when when second pair pairs, you need to make sure that you have some of it. So like you're, that's where your five, four is.
Well, usually, usually if it bets with a second pair, it's gonna be second pair with an over.
Right.
Not just second pair.
Yeah.
So bet big or check raise? You wanna drive your strategy based on the flush draw? You wanna bet small with hands like top pair? You wanna turn second pair into a bluff? So we bet the races. In position three X. What does that mean?
He's got sets, he's got
Or we're dead.
King, queen.
Is it just because we're not supposed to be betting small?
No.
Well, we do bet small sometimes.
I mean, it's ten percent, it's like definitely part of the strategy.
So click it back or just call?
Well, that's the thing, yeah. Um, I feel like
Call.
I agree.
I'm calling with the ace of spades, I would raise if I didn't have the ace of spades.
Exactly.
Well.
Wow.
That's something I've been kind of guilty of cuz I'm calling here cuz I wanna keep the bluffs in. And then, but no, you wanna raise back?
Oh, we're out of position here.
Yeah. And then let's see real quick.
Such a terrible card.
Such a bad We're still just gonna get it in.
He still has some like king high spades and stuff.
So and we float there with like ace, king and then ace, king wants to bet for value now.
Yeah, by the way, ace of spade is raising small, whereas without the ace of spade, we just go all in.
I think this is kind of an okay turn card cuz
This is
draw.
The terrible
like is forced to call off now.
What's his check raise value range?
King, queen, ace, queen.
We block ace queen.
I don't know.
Queen, some sets.
I just think
Ace queen sets for sure.
I think
Louis flushed Doesn't matter, we're still all in.
The biggest part is queen, king, which is like queen or the kings of that card.
I don't think king, queen is raising this flop at all.
It's his best queen.
Take a look. It's a, it's a weird part of the strategy cuz imposition probably just doesn't raise that much, right? Like imposition
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So we might be down a bit of a narrow part of the tree.
I didn't think king, queen was gonna be in there, I just
Ace, queen, which we blocked the hell out of.
So look at that, a little bit of his bluff, like he doesn't have, but we save.
And he's not raising sets.
Louis, for this one, um, normalize the range.
Please raise a little.
Yeah, nice to see that king ten of spades, king nine of spades, king eight of spades.
Yeah, so king, looks like king, queens almost always check raising.
No, never.
It still has a whole lot of them in range.
Yeah, but
They're calling.
Those are called.
If we're on the turn, then he must raise them off.
No, their their calls after he checked raise and we three bet his check raise.
Take this Oh, I wanna, I wanna see his, his check raising strategy.
No, no, we're looking at the imposition verse flop bet.
Yeah.
Alright.
So good note.
So he raises kings sometimes, luckily, there's only, there's only three combos of that, but that's actually a decent part of his range, which is scary.
I think he's more like, I thought he was gonna be like ace, uh, some, some suited aces. Or some like king, seven, a spade.
He has some kings in there. I'll get kings, yeah, king, king, six.
Me.
He's gonna call us.
So we're getting it in, also like, do we Also, we're getting it in, also, like, do we, do we do better, this is an Andrew Broke's concept, do we do better betting and getting him to call it off? Or checking and letting him decide whether to put a bet in, we're out of position, we don't get to decide whether a bet goes in. Um, I think we do better betting and forcing him to call, make an uncomfortable call, king, seven of spades here. Versus if we check, king, seven of spades gets to decide whether they wanna sit back and realize.
I think it's more about what our range wants to do, um, because the king, like what are we check raising that as a king in it, right? Queen, king, maybe?
Wait, but.
That raising, sorry, either way, like what are we raising it as a king in it? I think this card is better for his range than ours, cause he just had so many kings and we're not gonna have that many, so I'm doing a lot of checking here, maybe that's a mistake.
Yeah.
I think we have three bet pocket kings at some frequency, I think we have pocket kings more.
King is the best card for the big blind here.
I think we, I think we bet ten and go broke.
But he doesn't have kings, he doesn't have ace, king, we do.
Well, he definitely has kings, Louis, we just saw he has pocket kings.
What ace, what ace kings do we have?
Uh, all of them?
No, we're not gonna three bet all of our ace kings.
Let's look at our three thing strategy again.
For sure not, we got king, queen, right?
Not on the, not on the.
On the, on the flop, when he raises, what, what do we re-raise with?
Not ace, king.
Yeah, I don't think we have ace, king.
So.
No, that's pre-flop, he's talking about.
Yeah.
One note over.
Here, here, right here, that node, click on that.
Yeah, we don't have ace, king.
Yeah, we call them. We don't have king, queen either. And we, king, we bet it, we, we had shoved, when we bet it, shoved it.
This is kind of what I thought, we just don't really have a lot of king X in our kinks, we do have our trashy spade draws. So the king is just better for him in this spot because we re-raised.
Uh, uh. I guess so, but like pocket kings, we have some.
The king cannot be good for him.
Why?
Not possible.
Let's see, uh, on the turn.
Because where we have like slivers of ace, king, he should have none, right?
Alright guys, I have a way to try and solve this, let's look at our.
Range is like majority king, king.
Can we look at our ranges equity when the flop action finishes versus the equity when the turn hits? Like, we can see that, right? It's in, um, it's in.
True.
Go one more, one more over to his call.
Yeah, go to, yeah, his call, exactly.
Well, is it about this here, the big blind?
We can look at a report of turn cards, right?
Yeah, exactly. And then.
Turns, exactly.
Turns, but. We want equity.
Equity is, uh, right above your mouse, there you go.
This here? Well, see, that's what I mean, the ki- the, the king is one of the best card for us.
Yeah, it's still quite good for us.
What's the best card for the cutoff?
Queens, all the queens.
You, you can click it.
I don't, I'm just trying to think before I click.
But you can see it's a reverse, right? It shows it.
Also, before moving on, look at ranges.
Oh, Tim, you wanna, yes, it's just a queen.
Any spade, queens.
It has to be, it's alright, oh, look at this, it puts them right.
That's cool.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Or spades good for them too?
Yeah. Overall.
Little bit.
Okay, okay, so good for us.
And then Louis, you started off with a, with a, a view of your action on different turn cards, right? And I think most of it was just jamming.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah.
Like nearly, nearly range jamming, right?
Really?
A lot, I mean, not, not a hundred percent, but a lot, yeah.
Look at this.
We slow down on queens.
But, but hang on, we're working with slivers or.
I mean, for sure.
I think, given our removal effects with this exact hand, the king is pretty bad, because we block the ace high spade buffs, we block ace, queen value. But, that being said, I'm still gonna jam, because SPR half and.
Yeah.
Did you not see the equities, we just showed the dining?
Yeah, but that's not, that's for our whole range, that's not, given that we have ace of spades, ace.
Hmm, I guess that's true, but I think we're all kind of like cherry picking his range, like his range also has the king high spade buffs. His range also still has a number of combos of ace, queen, so like, you know.
That's why I still wanna jam.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I'm not scared with this hand, it's just, uh.
He's gonna have it sometimes, and that's fine.
I think our range is in a tough spot sometimes, though.
Well, no, the question really was, is it better to check call? Cause we're not folding there.
We're in, we're.
Or just bet ourselves.
We arranged jamming on that board.
Yeah, Joey, I think that's a great way to think about it, and I think you're dead right, cause that just lets spades just either bluff us or realize and.
Well, no, when we saw the term report. When we saw the term report, we were jamming our range on.
Almost, yeah. Alright, so this is a multi-way scenario. What do you guys do?
Get it.
The squeeze?
That race. Hundred percent. Now, squeeze.
No one is ever going all in here, right?
Um, it does it from the big blind, I don't know if anyone does that from the small blind this deep.
Holy shit.
It does.
Wow.
Wow.
I'd be doing that at fifty.
No, I've seen some hundred stacks where ace, king, three bet shelves.
We got the church, we shoving prayer.
Yeah, or do that live when you have raise, call, 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 you know, like multi, multi-way spots.
That being said, I'm about to go play some live poker, so I'm gonna drop off.
But.
Good luck. See you guys.
Uh, pair board, pretty good for us.
And we bet paired boards from. We, we bet these large.
Bet big on ten eye pair boards, I think.
Yeah, there were a lot of ten, ten boards that we bet bigger on.
So it's a pair board, we're out of position, so in general, we'll bet big.
But is this a value bet or marginal made?
We're just trying to shake, shake the tree here.
Okay.
At the same time, it's kind of a value bet, cause you get called by worse ace, so with this here, it's a special. It's like valuable, but I think it's a value bluff. Now.
We picked.
Wow, we gotta fire, I think it's going down.
I, I'd fire.
Why are we firing?
It's a good card for our range.
Cause we're driving a car that doesn't have brakes, Nick, that's why.
Okay.
Because, because, and because we, we have a legitimate, we have draws now, now we have a real draw.
So like, are you, are you finding all of our ace kings, like, I, I'd bet this hand, I would bet it smaller than this, because twenty six doesn't really make sense, we kind of are like priced in if he jams now. Um. So I bet with the king of hearts, because. We, there's two hearts on the board, so we're blocking some flush rock continues, like, he doesn't have king nine of hearts ever, king jack of hearts ever.
So if it was a queen, a queen of spades, you don't bet?
Um. Not ve- not as frequently, like checking probably half the time.
Okay, cause I think the queen, you pick up equity, so you kind of. Follow through with the motion.
We have, or we three bet, I'm, I'm, I'd rather bet ace, jack before ace, king.
We'll make that. Uh, queen of clubs. We still barrel.
We barrel more. With queen of.
I guess, cause he called some backdoors on the flop, like two backdoors with.
Make that a seven, we don't barrel anymore. Yeah, that's what I thought.
So put the queen of hearts back out. And then what ace, kings are we barreling with the most?
We checked.
I'm with hearts, wanna size down. But our, our hearts are betting a little bit less, but are betting bigger.
And Louis, can we see when we bet thirteen, are we getting some folds from under pairs? Is that the idea?
I think it wanted to go five, though.
Thirteen.
Yeah, I know, but I'm thinking. Are the under pairs, have, have they not folded the flop already to a big?
No.
No.
Read that with pocket eights here and then.
Louis, are you ever folding a pair to that flop?
Yeah, never.
I, well, these for sure.
Okay, a couple.
Yeah, not under the five, yeah.
In fact, he's raising them for protection at some frequency.
And then.
But you can't fold a, any pair, compare over a six.
Yeah, I guess you can, but it's my, it's the size of the bet, you know, if it was a bet small, it would be just continue, right? But the size of the bet.
Yeah, but the ten is paired, so the sixes could still easily be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so then we bet thirteen and what is?
Okay.
Imposition do?
Starts to fold seven, sixes.
Yeah, okay.
Has a very zero, you'd be called with eight.
Loves reason twos.
So those are our targets, and then we still have good equity against them as well, we still have ten lifeguards against those kinds of hands.
Swelling fives.
Okay, we block a good portion of his tens with his, with king ten.
But we follow through, but small.
We don't block any of his tens with our combo.
Why, and we bet smaller instead of big?
Cause it's the same suited as the ten.
It's the tiny SPR, I think, in, in large part.
Yeah, it's a one SPR, if we bet half pot, it's just weird, right?
We bet half pot, the raise were, were screwed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see the SPR, so thirteen.
Smiley raise, what do we do with this then?
Uh.
Three, four.
I think we end up mucking.
Uh, folding with the heart.
Hey, let's see, let's see, wait, wait, wait. So if he. Stuffs. His king is fearful, alright. So we're barreling. A prize that allows us to fold to a raise.
It's just a check fold now.
She, she barrel. Nine.
Wow.
Nine. Wow. Okay, so this is a multi-way one.
Call.
Um.
I don't know, I'm three betting a lot of suited eights and suited nines against one of them, so.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're both fine, I think you can call or three bet.
It's never a three bet, look at this.
A hundred big blinds deep. Is my wheelhouse.
Everything around it is good, but precisely queen nine, no. Alright. So suited nines, suited tens mostly.
Yeah, I mean, reasonably pulled from the right spot.
Yep, and the other line you wanna look at is that not queen nine, not jack eight, not ten, seven. Not the three gappers. What happened? Did you call and then it just went away?
Uh, yeah, because there's no three way with both of us.
Okay, okay, gotcha, alright.
Um, mostly call, three bet low fre- mostly call, three at low frequency.
I'm gonna think like thirteen percent.
Let's work on three bets. Oh.
Twenty seven.
Quite a lot.
Yeah, that's where, where.
Ooh, a six here is gonna, I'm checking now, pure here.
Um.
Low for your two bet.
No, we check and we don't fold.
I think betting's fine.
You think? Why have a six?
Yeah, bottom pair with, uh, ace kicker, but this board actually isn't bad for a three bet range, cause we're three betting from the big blind. So I'm not saying it's a range bet, but I think I'm betting like half pot with this hand a lot of the time, maybe like seventy percent and then checking the rest.
I think sizes, I think when we do bet, it sizes more five point five than ten. When we bet, I think it's more ten than five, honestly, it's, uh, good for the.
Who is checking?
I'm checking.
I am checking as well.
Check or bet big?
Okay, Nick, you say bet them?
And I say bet five.
Yeah, I'm betting a ten, like seventy percent and checking the rest, I'm not really betting small.
Okay, so.
I'm wrong.
Five, small.
By five.
By five, why are you that small here, Scotty? So three bet pot, you just see that every time?
Um, it's a three bet pot, it has locked up equity, that pushed me down in my, in my side.
Okay.
But I think we're the only ones that had, I think we have eights and nines more.
Eight, nine, he has eight, nine suited. Age for sure has nine, eight suited, it's only four combos.
So, so do we, we have it full frequency.
Right, but we don't have it now, and so that pushes down the, the sizing. What's the range doing?
We look at our betting strategy, yeah.
Man, I can see why this hand might not wanna size up, cause it's a pair with an over, but I think the range is generally gonna bet bigger. And I'm wrong, well.
No, it's betting larger, you have over bets.
Still twenty one percent.
Yeah, you're betting.
It, it's big, the same amount that it bets small and spreads them.
What does a button range look like after we three bet?
Yeah, it's a hard, uh.
Where are his bluffs coming from?
That's a hard range to split up.
You mean his bluffs?
Oh, he don't.
This is really bluff.
I was thinking he might have some bluffs from. Like some middle area of the.
What do you mean, bluffs? He's calling a three bet.
Yeah.
You mean four bet bluffs?
It's four bet bluffs.
Ace ten.
Okay.
Even I am messing up here, cause I'm too, well, no, impositions easy to call, ah, messing up for sure. Okay, so it's more like ace, ten, king, ten, queen, jack, oh.
Queen, jack, that's the weird one.
Queen, jack and jacks.
I'm never finding it.
Okay, no, no, makes sense. Cause these are too strong against like the small blind or the big blind. Alright, so here we are, how do we construct this strategy?
Uh, jacks, the card over the ten, always blasting at queens mostly.
So, yeah.
Top pair, top pair, top kicker.
Top pair, right, you blast, or super blast, then over pairs, so it's gonna be a very polar board because of that.
And then.
Surprise how many six, six we bet here.
Our bet ten are our stronger hands than that and our weaker hands than that, so like ten, nine, ten, eight, ten, seven, queens, kings, aces. Still more polar, and then your small bets are everything else in between.
Yeah, you bet your sixes and sevens, this, as if they were the same card, basically.
And, and then nut straight.
Okay.
What happened to my bet five point five?
Louis took a check note, let's just enjoy the moment.
Alright, we're checking.
No, we need to work on our checking strategy.
Always shaking here and then I'm not folding and no one.
We'll play it again before, we'll, we'll go back.
We, we'll go Scott, the Scotty way.
Right, now, now we, now, now I think after this nonsense, we check.
You call your five point five bet nonsense? The one you fought for?
Yes, I, I still stand for it, I wanted to get, I wanted to fold with it.
Okay. What about now?
Now we fold.
Why?
Because I hate my life. Because we, because we, I don't think we call third pair. To a half pot bet, that's what I think, and if we don't fold now, we fold on the river.
I call?
Okay, right, call, let's fold on the river. But if he has a six or an ace, he ain't folding. Hmm, then I'm not folding. Maybe not even like a brick, oh, brick three. Brick three, and he's. He really doesn't have any five acts, why any at all?
We fold.
We fold. I was gonna say, man. I'm not folding that quick, it's like, what fives does he have? He's got like, does he, does he have six, five? I don't think so. Ace five, we block some. That's it. Pocket fives.
You wanna call and see a ten?
He's not doing with, with that one.
This guy has like pocket seven here.
Got pocket fives. Ace nine, got him.
Got him. Do we bet some?
Is this a? Just, yeah, this is the outlier, isn't it?
Hmm, king, five, king, six, no, I think there's a bunch, he's not alone.
I thought all the better suited ones call.
In five, king, six.
Oh, wow, okay.
Pair board. We have a lot of nine X or. We're out of position, we can bet eleven.
Check fold.
Bet eleven.
What?
Check fold.
Need a suit.
Oh, come on, we don't need a suit.
Yeah, you do.
Is what I was saying, you're a little over aggressive in some spots.
Oh. Oh, so close. So close.
Yep, but you do lose your shit if you have a suit. Fold.
Fold.
Yeah.
Mostly call three bets on.
Always a three bet.
Mostly call three bets on.
Always a three bet thirty percent of the time.
So we did three bet.
Fair board, out of position.
Um, I think we're gonna.
Smash this one very hard, think it's gonna be a bit small.
I think we're gonna have small bets and large bets.
Oh, no, tell you what.
I agree, our range is gonna have some large bets for sure, like a lot.
And then we blast it. Right, so we have a ten in our hand, so we're gonna blast it.
Uh I think this one can, I think I'm betting small with this one, but I think it's gonna size up some as well.
Thing is, like Ken has been saying, like, all out of position, fair boards like these, we size up a lot.
But not on the, but not on the small, small side pair boards.
That's right, that's right.
We don't do so much.
Either way, small is probably.
Well, I think there's there's different small, small, because I think like. Five, five is different than deuce, deuce, because just neither player really has hardly any deuces at all.
Alright. My one.
Did we bet small on the flop?
Yes.
Checking.
I'm gonna go like sixteen or check. I'm not giving up yet, I gotta blast one more, so. Sixteen, yeah, we can jam rivers, so.
Why do you have to blast one more? What? What about this hand and this turn make you want to blast?
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's garbage.
Yeah, exactly.
It's kind of not though, right? Like we, he has King highs, he has some Queen highs, he has like two spades.
That's where I'm at, Tim, this is too high in my range to bluff.
So we're gonna check and let him bluff us off it.
Well, no, I don't know that that's the best outcome. I just like, I I do want to point out that this hand's not garbage and range be range.
Because like, and if your reason. If your reason for betting this is it's garbage, you're betting your entire range, like.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, I probably, I probably am, I'm definitely overdoing it, but we block aces, we have aces in our range. We block tens, we got tens in our range. I don't know, tens would want to go too big here, but they might.
If you had Queen six suited, you're blocking Queens and you're blocking sixes, like every hand's gonna have blockers.
Is this a changing the equities here?
Not significant though.
A break, it changes the thing, it doesn't improve us, it doesn't dramatically change the board. I don't see why we would bet. It's not like the king here, right?
Well, it doesn't. If, you know, on certain spade rivers. I don't hate that, I think it's gonna be part of our strategy.
Really curious, I think it's a heavy check. Hmm, that's small.
Mostly check betting small is good too. What's our range doing?
Yeah, Lou, I'd love to see this one in the flop strategy.
Don't just, don't go in too big.
So the important thing is Ken is finding fifty percent checks.
Well, it does bet everything. But only half the time. I bet everything a hundred percent of the time. I'm a blaster.
So one of the takeaways I'm seeing here with the ace high is that we are betting the highest ace highs a little bit. And then we're slowing down as we go lower, it's like ace, king, ace, queen. Getting in there.
Basically, you get to this spot, you flip a coin with all your garbage and say better, you know, fifty fifty better or check.
I mean, it's solver mixes, so they continue to have every hand in range possible. You could also simplify your strategy too. Where you're just betting the worst hands and. That have no showdown. Like, is there a? What's, what's a good example? Easy of betting uh Queen four suited. Louis, what's the E V of betting Queen four suited? Ten point. Uh, say like. Hold on, go back to it.
Oh.
So but uh three for a Queen four of clubs, sort of it's the value of betting Ace Jack.
Two ten?
Nine point two. I guess he just called by worse two. Alright.
Louis, can we review the flop charging?
Were you seeing nine point two on the Ace Jack? I saw it eleven point seven.
Uh under the three point three bet sizing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it is true, we have a lot of half pottin here, we found the quarter pot with this hand. The half pots like lower over pairs up to maybe a Kings kind of, but not really aces and lower over cards. And okay.
So turn eight, we still bet it a lot, I'm surprised at how often we get to bet it. But it's like spades. Yeah. It's all spades. Nine six here. What is nine six here? Nothing?
Gutter.
Okay. So pretty much a break. Queen on the river, what do we do with that?
I actually want to jump back to aping a brick, it's kind of not a brick because we were betting a lot of our lower over cards. And so we were betting stuff in that range, so we.
Yeah, it's pretty good, right?
Yeah, we turned either pairs or a lot of gutters.
Yeah.
Whereas like we checked a lot of like, on the flop, we checked a lot of like King ten. Kind of hands. Queen seems fine after betting. Yeah, he doesn't have a ton of those, but we still have showdown value, we beat worse a size.
We block, we block the spade draw.
Yeah, we block the spade draw, this is not really a very appealing bet at all.
If we check, is he is he supposed to check his front door spades? And only but bluff his hearts?
No, I mean, I'm sure he bluffs his spades at some frequency.
Alright, then then it's good, then it's good, we have the tennis space, then then having the tennis spades is bad for us.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not in our favor. But I still think we have showdown at this node.
He lets us. Now we have to fold, we don't have to call it.
Thing is pretty bad. He got us.
No.
Never folding. And. Mixing raises and calls, and I think mostly raising.
Yeah, three betting.
Yes.
Squeezing.
Clean, low, low. Think we can bet small or check this hand.
Checking to check call, not to check raise.
I think we bet. Small.
Uh I think we're checking. Like half the time and betting small the other half the time.
Hey, next to, mostly check.
Nope, not mostly check.
Alright, uh it bats, but the highest.
The highest thing is the check, but we mostly bet.
Yeah.
Call.
Just a call.
This is crazy.
Raising, but it's not crazy. Hmm.
Um. We'll actually have some donk leads here.
Yeah, we'll definitely donk this this card sometimes, but not with this hand, right? Like we wanted to have like mainly Kings and good eight, good Queens and buffs.
Yeah. I think we'll do a low, very low frequency, but mostly like ninety percent check, ninety plus percent check.
I agree.
Yeah, does it twenty percent of the time still?
After I go check, I still don't really.
Huh?
We see our dog strategy on the king. I think we're doing it a ton.
We should, right? Because it's the best card for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't really.
Alright, we do, twenty seven percent, I mean, that's kind of, that's a lot of donks, I think.
Yeah, twenty seven percent is.
It's a lot of donks on a turn.
And every and every hand has it. Six, five is, you know, the six, five is a nonsense sliver, but every single hand donks it some.
Yeah, interesting that our aces wakes up and is like, oh, actually, I'm just gonna dunk again.
Uh oh, here comes a big old. I'm ready to fold.
Yeah, I'm folding.
We got a check, check last time.
Yeah, but this, I mean.
Saved us money.
Uh, the save three bet.
Now thirty percent three bet.
Oh, six percent, well, let's work with that. Alright, C I board.
Sucks.
That's small.
No spade, SPR over three, yeah, I mean, we can bet small.
Can bet large too.
Never wrong.
Uh I think we're checking a ton on this card now.
Yeah.
With our range.
And also this particular hand.
Agreed, yeah, we don't have a spade. We we have showdown.
Do we block now?
It's not crazy. We can get all the verse.
No, I think it's a check, fine, check.
Snap one off.
We're just checking, we don't fold.
Are you never blocking here, Louis?
Not really. Uh turn one, check, check, I I will have second there, we should, right?
That's the thing, yeah.
At least consider it, yeah.
We can squeeze a little value out of like worse Queens or pocket jacks or something.
So I've turned, turned over, well, it's a three bet pot, so you know, it's not really like, yeah. Standard. Check, check. Take it on.
The money coming.
I want to squeeze here.
I want to call this hand.
Go ahead.
I want to squeeze.
Yeah, I know, I think squeezing is good against the capped button range.
What? They both go.
I don't want to have a nine verse to cut off is my thing. Squeeze or not? No, call.
Squeeze more suited hands.
Cash, I think that might have been a fold.
It is a fold in cash.
Yeah, it's definitely fold, definitely fold.
Oh.
Oh.
I don't know, how many you get with two, how many three bets you get with this hand with against two players?
Exactly, with the opposite ones, very little, very few. Yeah, if we can call.
Good afternoon.
What's up, guys?
These um, these offsuit Broadway is mix a couple three bets or no, okay, different combos.
Against CP, not really.
Check fold.
Yeah, check fold for sure.
Uh.
Want to leave on the sixth turn?
No, I was just thinking about what my whole range, like this hand doesn't want to. But we're definitely gonna start having bets, this is Queen's just too high up in our range.
Uh no backdoor.
Like my ten high and stuff like that, I'm definitely starting to blast.
Did they add some bet size?
You want to?
What the hell are these colors?
It's circus.
You want the sevens so that the villain doesn't have a seven, eight or something like?
Nine, seven, nine, eight.
Yeah, you want to represent the seven F uh nine comes or whatever comes to Fox.
Lot of Forex. So it's not being pushed by the showdown value of the hand either, it's just blocker oriented. Just check fold still, Queen high.
I guess, right?
Dooley got another final table, this kid.
Lily.
Yeah, I got third entering ring event.
And another one that I think I didn't have a piece of.
And the three hundred game yesterday?
Yeah.
Wow.
He's gotta be up like twenty K this month, right?
No. I would dream about there. Hey, yeah, how much did you get yesterday?
Uh, he got seven thousand.
He's so probably less than half of that, because he doesn't play three hundreds on his own.
But he got first in that ring event for what, twelve K?
Yeah. That was a.
He had a hundred percent of himself there, right?
Yeah, read by bullet, Tim had action on the first bullet.
Dude, I had a lot of action in the first one.
Imagine that.
That's so messed up. No shared dilution, what a monster.
Yeah.
Yeah, just call.
Yeah, call.
Hey, hey. Let's win all the money or lose all the money. Let's lose all the money.
Yeah. Check, we're not gonna have any bets here.
Terrible.
I, yeah, fold. Oh, is he just range jamming here?
No.
Do we see hi- his strategy?
His strategy is to have an ace.
I think he might just be range jamming.
Yeah, yes.
Now twenty percent.
He is, he's just supposed to have an ace sometimes.
He just missed this one.
It's one bluff. That's all I see.
And it's not really a bluff.
So you're saying there's a chance.
Yeah.
So wait, is ten eight a flush?
Well, it's betting the wall.
Yeah.
He's only jamming the flush, yeah.
Yes, no, this is so non solver. Do you see a single bluff here?
Well, if they're bluff, if they don't have a flush.
We pocket eight, yeah.
Why is that space, ten eight?
Well, it's betting small with a bunch of bluffs.
Right, no, I meant his jams, he has no bluff jams.
Yeah, but we could have a flush, so like the straight is like a semi, it's not a bluff, but it's not like pure value, right?
Well, it's pure value that that sometimes loses.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, value doesn't.
Oh, you're right, I mean, yeah, yeah.
But there is, there is no bluff, there is never, there is never a reason to call him with less than a straight here. Click, click, click on the all in, let's see if there's even a sliver of bluff.
It's just not always the nuts.
No, it's not always enough.
Second nuts.
But King, Queen never wins against any hand in his range.
Uh Louis, in the bottom right, your filter is where it says no draw, what is that?
Let's see.
Because they're, we're on the last, oh no, we're on the last card. Because you already have a straight, there's no draw. I don't know.
Doesn't pick them as. A category.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, if you.
But it has purple in it, so it has.
No, it's, yeah, look, this, Yoss is actually right, it's. Yeah, it's not a draw because you have it.
Right.
That's funny. Alright.
I've never seen this in the solver.
Oh, no, I messed the whole thing up.
The ace high should be draws, actually.
Oh, we're in his position now, jam. What? We just saw this.
Oh, my God, I messed up the whole thing. It's so here. I can just do this and then. Study this spot.
No.
I just looked up because I was curious, I had a stake of Dooley in that event. The first time, probably a decent sized, and he canceled it. The first time, probably a decent sized, and he canceled it. I had sixteen percent of it and he canceled it and re-entered.
Oh, my goodness.
Because he's super using and he knows when he's gonna bing.
Yeah.
Jesus Christ.
Okay, so.
I don't want to sponsor him, so I cancel. The boss.
I have to start buying pieces of you guys, so I care about what you do.
Yeah.
For Scotty.
I want to care about other people.
Why would you want to care about other people? Aren't you a poker player?
The reset history is good. We want both effective stacks. Alright, alright, alright. But then we cut off by Jack. That should be it. Our position off us. And we're back. Back in biz.
Rebet him.
Three bet this guy. Balls. High low low. Think it's a bet small. Sounds about right.
Yep. But look at how much, but but there's was a fair amount of betting big.
Yeah, it was.
And there was, there was a lot of checking too.
A lot of checking, we're out of position.
Yeah. I think we check now.
Maybe bear, double barrel this.
I would check. Says six turns, not really a spot where you want to double barrel. Just check it down, pray that he beats us.
Oh.
Squeeze or call. I would just call here.
I'd say he connects.
Squeeze him. I'll call, wow. These guys stations. Is this a squeeze?
No, call. Ever fold.
I'm tripping. Suited eight. Suited.
I think queen eight, no, I think it's, it's, remember that Louis? It's queen nine, jack eight.
Queen nine, jack eight.
Yeah, it's not the queen eight or the jack seven. Oh, no, this is a completely different thing. You don't do it at all.
The boomerang.
Low boomerang.
Low, yeah. I'll just call. And check fold.
I, we, hmm.
Not all this going.
Yeah.
We have back, back door.
Yep. And we picked up our, the wrong back door.
Laughing or not?
You have queen high.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, ah, yeah, queen high, one ace, king board might be too strong to blow.
Ah, sometimes. Just fold. Too many draws.
Raise twenty three. There we go. That's how you win.
Solid, like it.
You guys think duly got his ring by playing straight forward? Today, can we pre-bet this guy? Not really, right?
No.
It suited lines. And suited tens. Well, we can.
Can we even fold it?
Eleven or sixteen here?
Eleven.
It's a dry board. You don't have to go too big.
Oh, sixteen is more. After he calls the big bet, I think we we check now that we're second pair, yeah. No, never.
Wow.
A super double barrel.
I guess it's a better card for our range. Hmm. We gotta call thirty to win one forty.
Yeah, snap it off, right? And then, oh, surprise ass queens.
The implied odds with the straight two, a big payoff, right?
Yeah, you gotta pay off there.
Yeah, there's no implied odds after we're all in.
You'll never win, though. Queen five suited.
Hold.
Oh, my goodness.
Never.
I don't have that queen five suited in my game right now. What about you guys?
Ow.
Yeah, when we're deep, we're gonna play a lot of the suited cards from our range. Not all of them, like the big blind, but.
Wow, this is pretty crazy, right? That's a hell of a strategy. Okay, so let's treat that. Okay.
I think we size up on this board.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know about this hand.
Oh, wow.
I mean, if it was an eight, the seven was an eight, I'd say, yeah. Like, if we had jack five here, I'd say, yeah.
Say, yeah.
Why, why do you not like?
Because they can make straights, like, I mean, the queen can make a straight too, but the jack, I guess it was an eight, the queen can make straight two ways. If it was a jack, it can make it two ways. It's just better.
What about the jack instead of the queen?
What can make a straight two ways? I don't know if I'm thinking about it right, but that's just how I look. That's how I see it.
You, you have two backdoor straights.
Yeah.
Oh, check.
Bet two point two.
Five. Actually, that five. Two, five was its.
Is the most common bet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm honestly always checking that flop. That hand.
Oh, good. We picked up equity. Let's continue. He, we, second pair. Second pair. Second pair paired again. And so that's good for his range.
Well, it's good for ours too, because we're gonna be betting ten small as well, I think, on the flop, a lot of them. So it's not like terrible for us.
Yeah.
I think we can barrel. Small again.
Seen in three bet pots, we're betting the second and third pair often too.
I don't think we go big O P. I think we just go small again, because we have a ten, we're not trying to blow them out of the pot.
Well, you pick up a backdoor and you benefit from fold equity, so you gotta size up here.
If it's ten, you want to get all the money in on the river.
I think with the stacks, you might want to do sixteen.
I think eight's good, but we'll see.
Because if we had. If we had a value hand, we'd want to go sixteen to put them on.
Whenever, like you're barreling darn fifty five percent, it should be your number one size.
I want.
Allocations.
And all the cohesion did. We should solve, we should solve the cohesion.
I don't see anything about this board that makes it a big bet board.
If we didn't have the spade, we would probably size up.
It's a flush draw. Great, the flush draw, okay.
The flush was a good reason.
And six, five.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna mix checks into like almost every sizing that the range is gonna use and checks.
Or it's a three bet pot, then like the big size.
I would go twenty three here.
I like big again, yeah. Twenty three.
Yeah, twenty three is good.
It's good enough to get all the money and you need.
It's about half size over jam.
We can do thirty four as well.
Yeah, but also small, so.
Not a, it's not too bad. I mean, we can.
Block all the nuts.
Yeah.
Oh.
You what? You bet nine?
The flush completed, we're, we're in a three bet pot. I think that's what's going on.
They also completes, but uh. He's got a lot of two pair combos.
No, the only option is bet nine.
He folds.
Did he really fold?
Yes.
And he fold queens.
Wow.
Machine ain't fish like we are.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, he got a nit, nit tag for me.
I am calling that nine.
Range bet. Um.
Range bet.
Is small or large with this hand?
I saw a lot of large bets on this texture when we were looking earlier, didn't, didn't we?
No.
It's not two, two, a bit pass or this is three pass.
It's six or twelve here.
Yeah, so I mean, like half pot is what I meant by large. I thought we saw that on a lot on this, like ace, king, Broadway.
I think it's small because there's a lot of.
Broadway. I thought we went small when it was Broadway because of locked up equity.
Yeah.
Um, we went ace, king, nine, we, we, we.
Check.
Check or bet really small.
Uh, there is some half pot.
Well, it makes sense, right? Because we have second pair.
We have second pair. We have a gun shot. Check.
Makes sense to check here.
What's our range doing though?
And we, we have a state.
Can I see?
I want to bet now.
Because I'm surprised this isn't just a range bet board.
It's a board where there's a lot, oh, it's betting big a lot.
Yeah, we saw it in the report earlier.
So most frequent sizes half pot, and then you bet small sum, you bet large sum. And you check a lot.
Average is half pot then, and a lot of checking.
And I was wrong about the ace, king, ten, I thought.
Maybe it's on ace, king, lower, I can imagine.
Yeah, maybe the ace, king low does it even more than this. And that's what I, that was the thing. But on this turn.
Alright.
I want to bet this.
Question, what do you guys think about this? So how to figure out the flop bet size? Number one, how deep are we? Is it the spot where we have twenty big line or are we a hundred big ones?
Yes, stack depth is the single most important driving factor to bet size.
Second, how many high cards are, are there on the board? Is it like a? Ace, low, low, ace, king, something, you know?
Is the board paired?
It's the board draw heavy.
Yeah, that's, that was my addition to it. Uh, like.
You're missing the dynamic board.
Is the board coordinated and connected?
That's what I mean, dynamic.
What?
Well, no, locked up equity and dynamic are two different things.
Yeah.
Yes, very different.
Okay. But we have locked up equity. What's the suit nature of the board? So that covers like rainbow. Monotone flush draws? What's the nature of your hand? Top pair, top kicker, for example, versus like top set? Right?
Um.
Top pair, top kicker, you're gonna blast, whereas top set, you're probably gonna.
I know this is just nitpicking, but I like to put my, like, what equity bucket is your hand in?
Hand class, which was sometimes also so.
So when we're talking about like locked up equity, this is like not flush draws, stuff like that, where like essentially if we get to the river, it's not done.
No, board, board like these where the opponent could just flop the street. And then you're just like, eh.
Oh, okay, that makes total, okay, when you're dead, got it.
When, when, when the opponent could just flop the nuts and you're drawing.
When, when there's a straight available onboard basically, or, or a flush, like. When it's not draws anymore, there's hands that are the nuts.
Even bears, air force, they prepare that is a.
And the, and the way they think of.
They will have in one, in one's range.
Is, is, it's the opposite in a sense of dynamic in that. Whatever, whatever is the nuts on the flop is going to be the nuts on the river almost all the time.
Yeah.
That's, that is a locked up board, which means straights and flushes, but that's, that's what's locked up about it is I've got the best hand now and it's not vulnerable.
But like if this was ace, king, nine of spades. Like you change the ten to a nine, it becomes a dynamic board and not a locked up board.
Exactly, right. Because the nuts right now is like, is not likely to be the nuts on the river.
Not. Alright, I'm following.
The best life, yeah.
Less likely. Yeah. Pocket aces is.
Yeah, ace, king is probably the nuts on the river, but yeah, you know, no, no, sure. Don't lock that.
Yeah, I think it's all the same, like just people call it different things.
Anything else we should think about when we think about flop bet sizing?
Board pair.
He already has it.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see that, sorry. Yes.
I mean, I always pay attention if I've been playing with them the last five or six hands. I mean, like, are they calling big bets or they like player tilt, player mentality?
Connectivity of the board, don't you?
Um, it should be something like range versus range.
That dynamic is the board, yeah.
Like, um. Say like a, on a nine, eight. Two douche board, who has more nines and eights? Like.
It's also ranges indeed.
Oh. Range advantage and not advantage.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, who has the range advantage?
Uh, are you in position or out position?
Yeah, we tend to bet a little more out of position, a little higher.
Something else?
Range equity or range advantage and not advantage. That's always important when you're doing bet sizing.
I don't want to use the older terms. Because these are too grown. I want to see like when I am looking at the flop, what I think. Directly, I'm not never thinking about like who has the nut advantage here. Right? I'm more thinking about. There's one eye cards, there's two high cards, there's a flush draw, uh, it's paired, it's monotone, it's based on, 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 on like, uh, precise. Uh. Flop categories, right? And then the, the nature of our hand. Uh, the, they, they're, how, how dynamic it is, is it, you know? That's, that's the thing you kind of think about.
Many players as well.
Should we add, like, do we get better combos than ours to fold?
Your range bet, that's not that important.
Well, yeah, that's just def- defining which hands do you want to bet with?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's pretty much hand class, because like if you get better hands to fold, that's kind of the definition of a bluff. You're low in your range, therefore you can attack hands higher in their range. And I think that's very important, but I think it's kind of already included. Yeah, better hands to fold slash worse hands to call.
And do we, that, do we call that headroom?
I'm sorry?
Is, is the term for that headroom?
I've never heard that term before.
Uh, I didn't hear a term.
Yeah, there's a single, there, there, there is a single word for that, for why you bet a, why you bet a king six, but not a king jack.
I don't know about it.
I don't know.
I didn't hate this.
Never heard the term.
Right, that's the new term.
What is it?
Headroom, you have headroom, you, you.
Headroom.
Using that then.
Yeah. Yeah, why king, why king three would wanna bet more often than say king ten?
Interesting.
But what does headroom mean?
But there's that, that, that there's room above you for them to fold.
I find it very confusing at.
I don't like that term. Fine.
I might, might put it in, but.
So you don't. I understand what he means. It's like, when you bluff ace two to get all the higher aces to fold.
Alright, that's, that's better hands to fold.
I C M, whether we are deep or not, that changes, right?
Bar.
Gonna change our flop strategy? The five. Are we at top?
Does I see affect this, the sizing very much, or does it affect the frequency mu- much more?
Um, I think more frequency indeed, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you bet at all, because uh, if you're uh, uh.
Yeah.
Sometimes, of course, also sizing, but it's more frequency, I think.
Okay.
It's a multi raise, indeed, very important.
That's about it, right? What else do you guys think about when you score?
On the top, how deep are we?
Yeah.
There should be a sub category of SPR.
Is this only for heads up? Or are we heads up? Yeah, it's right there, sorry.
Cause a hundred big blinds in a single raised pot is a different SPR than a three bed pot.
Yeah. Uh, we're just looking for decisive factors when we look at that board texture. How, like, uh, what are the factors that get us to bet more or bet less? The frequency and the size.
Does paired board count for uh, locked up equity or?
No.
Well, I always pay attention to paired boards. I mean, that's something like, that I always influences is my betting.
Yeah, well, pair boards, you know, uh, depending on whether it's a single.
It's hard to hit the pair of boards, or if you have a range advantage, you can bet small and get a lot of folds because you should. Defending.
Louis, monotone boards.
Yeah, that's in there, the suit nature of the board.
Oh, okay.
Also, the, the amount of players, if you're three betting, you're gonna bet a lot bigger if there's several people in the pot. So that's affecting the sizing.
I thought it was the opposite, Andy. The more people in the pot, the smaller your, your.
Normally, yes. No, if there's a raise and you're three betting, you, you then three bet their raise and add, add everyone else's in, so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but we are talking both.
All right, yeah, okay, okay.
All right. If we, if something else comes up, uh, let me know. What did we do here? Yeah, we checked, then we're gonna call. And then we're gonna check. Then we're gonna call. And then we're gonna check. Then we're gonna win. No. Ooh. Pocket six. What do you guys wanna do here?
Mostly call.
Mostly call. It might have a sliver.
There's no sliver in my book here. It's a pure call.
Fifteen percent.
So, okay.
Those are pure call on it.
This is in the boomerang. Thing is, is the small, small blind doesn't have the boomerang, right?
Right.
Um, the big line.
Queen five would, i- if I remember before, I think we're on the button where it was partially calling, partially folding.
No, partially three betting and calling.
And that was against the button. I think against the cutoff, it's just a pure fold.
Folded.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
All right.
Just have a call. Like queen five was the bottom of our range against the button.
So. So. Uh, the low boomerangs against late position, right? And the high boomerangs against EP. Is that right?
I don't know, you can check.
Yeah, more linear. There's a little bit of, of polarization where you, but uh, but yeah, it's primarily linear.
Well, it's spelled wrong.
It's spelled wrong.
See, you can see the little bit of polarization in that you're calling a lot of ace, ten, king, jack, and then three betting more above it and below it. So that's kind of where you can see the position, but it's.
I don't see, I don't see a boomerang.
No, the boomerang is here. You see it?
Uh, you mean the big blind?
Yeah. So seven, six suited, I mean, if you do all three bets of a six, why do we even play, right? Okay. I wouldn't wanna bet small here, I think.
Yeah, three to a straight, three to a flush, red hand. No showdown.
Didn't pick up equity, give up?
Yeah, give up, just check fold, we're done.
Ooh.
No way out. No.
Shoot her way out.
Ah.
Yes. Yes. I regret nothing.
Ah.
All are a bunch of aggro fishes.
Ah. Come play with me then.
Yeah, just give up. Check fold.
Are you gonna float wider then?
Yeah, definitely. Except I can't play on GG anymore, so.
Can you not?
No, not without VPNing. I don't really want to, cause you know, it just seems tiny chance of things going wrong, so. Call Jack ten off.
Yeah. Then check. Bet two, I mean.
I think we can call.
You wanna check raise? Um, yeah, we can either.
More than we're calling, cause this hand doesn't really have showdown, but.
Do we raise?
It can get better fold.
Old.
But I think we target our check raises for hands with backdoors. I think these offsuit ones, we often just let go.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah.
No, like fold.
There's a sliver.
But I said everyone target their backdoors. I think Jack ten with the, of the backdoors is gonna get in there.
Look at him, he's gonna fold. Oh my god.
Hey, you need Jack ten of hearts, diamonds or clubs, but you have so much stuff you can check raising. You check raise four, five, five, six, eight, ten spades.
All kinds of eight acts, all kinds of nine acts, yeah.
Look at this. Have the ten of hearts.
Well, you're in a tree that doesn't exist.
That's just. Not a very.
I mean.
Not a sliver. Look at this, we're riding the slivers. Ah, what is he gonna do? Look at him. We got him.
You got him. Whew.
All right.
Strictly call, only call.
You never squeeze?
No, not against two players. I don't think.
Now I guess two players with the offsuit.
Jesus.
Not really.
It's only a squeeze if it's against two players. You just don't do that hand. Call.
King four.
Louis, can we go back to that paired board seven, three, three and see what our check raising strategy is?
We're gonna check raise four X, eight takes. Six.
Low overcards with um, with backdoors, I think basically.
You will.
We're gonna check raise Jack ten off. No, surprising.
Why is that surprising?
Look at that, it's lit up on the suited side. So Jack ten suited with the three different.
He's ranged betting, right? Any two or almost. And then when he ranged back and we check raise, if a jack or a ten comes, it's clean on a turn. Whereas if we just.
Yeah, but it's just, we're, we're so deep, it's SPR sixteen or something. So we want to uh, we wanna see good looking turn cards. We wanna see turn cards that give us flush draws.
Also, honestly, I feel like people are way over folding against check raises.
You're playing a solver.
So, I know, but I feel like people are way over folding. Even look at him, he ended up folding, right? And I think.
I guess that's true, but if I wanna find it much more, I'm not gonna find it from Jack ten off here. I still am gonna like, look at ten, eight suited. You know, ten, eight suited is calling some here. If I'm gonna find more three bets, I wanna get all the ten, eight suited with backdoors and raise them one hundred percent.
Yes.
That's where I'm gonna find.
And jack eight suited and queen eight suited and jack six suited with backdoor flush draws.
I agree. These are all fair, a lot superior combos to the, to do with. I agree with you guys, but.
It's just striking how much it goes per.
Maybe we should try to get even more.
Why?
Because people overfold.
But you're advocating for something a solver isn't doing. I think you need to be careful telling people to do something a solver's pure folding.
It's just a nice little exploit against population, cause.
But you shouldn't be like raising different hands. Like if you think population's over folding, check raise the same hands that are mixing more often. Don't start check raising four, two suited here or king four offsuit here, just to add combos.
Don't you think um, population is over folding to check raise?
Yeah, that's why my check raise is twenty percent, but.
Is it twenty? I doubt it.
I think it's, I think it's not, Louis, I think your idea is fine. Um, I would also say though, um, like, I would go a little bit more polar. Like if I was gonna pick up hands on the offsuit side here, I'd look at ten, eight off.
Yeah.
Cause it gets a little bit more value from folds and.
You got the answer already, uh, check raise and then go for hundred percent check raise on those, like Nick uh, said.
Yeah, so maybe this combo is not that great check raise, but the idea.
I think I agree with what Nick said. If you wanna expand your reign, expand the ones that are already doing it partially. That makes a lot of sense.
Then you avoid having bad blockers or something like that.
I think, I think having those backdoors is a nice way to keep yourself out of trouble in super deep spec spots, cause otherwise you like end up on a turn and there's like sixty bigs in the pot and you're like, how did this happen? And, and you have like, you know, no real draw, no real equity and yeah.
But yes, they are falling a lot, uh, much, much plays.
So, three, a lot of upper dangler four X, but less than I thought. Right? Even like a ten, four with a backdoor flush draw. I would have check raised that every time. So upper dangler, it picks from fives more than from fours. Any idea why?
It's close to the seven. I don't know.
Maybe, maybe.
The eight, it's the upper dangler to the seven, the seven, the six, upper dot bottom dangler to the seven, still makes sense, but why a five before a four?
Uh, uh, does depend on his raises.
Are we against?
Where they come from, his bluffs.
Are we against button?
Hijack.
Okay.
Hijack doesn't have five or four in his range actually, so I don't know what problem is.
Connects to higher backdoor straights, maybe?
Yeah, it's, it can be just a very, very minor difference.
Jack five doesn't, yeah.
Actually, zero, zero, one versus zero. Yeah, okay. I, I don't know the reason for that kind of difference. That's, that's minor difference, I mean. Yes, king four, yeah, king five, six, five.
I don't know.
What's the hijack C bet or?
Everything, if you look at EVs, of course, very close, everything, the four and the five.
Yeah, definitely.
There's not much difference in the fours and fives there either.
You can, you can try to look uh, for reasons, but uh, that's just, just speculating, I think.
Well. Okay, okay. I don't see that directly. So I guess we can move on.
Yeah, when it's, when you gotta go too far into it to figure it out, it's probably not even worth it. Unless you're playing very, very top level.
Old.
I don't know, Joey, small states are getting tougher and tougher everywhere. Oh.
That hurts.
Again, we're dominated. Raise.
Raise.
All at the time.
Oh, this is horrid.
Yeah, we can't even fold because we don't have a spade.
We have, we have a spade.
I know, that's what I'm saying. We can't even look at it and say, well, we have no spade, we can fold.
Oh, we gotta call to make our point eight bigs.
Yeah, I'm just unlucky that.
Now it's, oh, but to that size.
Fold.
Yeah.
There's not, not much behind that, so.
What do you do with pocket tens?
Same.
Depends, I might call because an eight is at least uh, not.
Same.
We're in tens have an open ender.
Not tens are open ended.
Uh, I might jam, no, a little bit.
We have.
Okay.
What do you, we're jamming twenty-three percent of the time.
He, his colors are backwards. I'm used to sa- seeing blue as um, fold.
I don't see any bluffs in our jam range.
I think it's more like protection and thin value.
King seven.
Big ten.
Nine, nine, eight there. Does king seven, oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
King seven's the bluff. Eight, six is the bluff.
Yep.
There it is.
Being ten, being seven.
A high equity bluff.
So king eight, eight, seven's also a bluff too, I guess.
Yep.
Those are, those are all pairs plus straight draws plus specials.
Yeah, but first of all.
Open ended plus.
Yeah, king, queen is getting like some protection. It's like thin, but once you just shut down action.
But this is a high equity board for uh, the button because can't al- almost not message, so yeah, you don't have a lot of bluff problem, you know?
This one should be a high rain, a high boomerang, right? But king five is just like too good, it's gotta be in there, right?
No, I think it's, I think this gets in there.
Yeah.
Not much.
High boomerang.
Yeah, we found our five percent.
So it's more like king six, but we're in the right neighborhood. And king nine a lot.
I like those from the button now, that are from the big blind, I don't do that.
Louis, simple heuristic says bet five point five, but that seems.
Check fold.
Horrible.
Yeah.
Out of position on the big blind, uh, this deep stack.
Yeah, well, is, is your, Louis, do you not have that heuristic deep stacked?
Problem is, we learned that we have a kicking range based on suit on these flush draw boards. So I'm gonna give a chicken.
I would give up.
I also three bet small, but that's only uh, then I'm like thirty bigs or blow.
I don't think I can hold myself anymore.
Late C bet. Wait, C bet.
Better hold on.
Five percent, it's somewhere there.
Yeah, the queen is not that good.
Hold.
Well, he's just.
And was trapping us.
Yeah, how?
He spotted the trap. Bet, bet, bet.
Yep. Seventeen or?
No, eleven is enough to get it in on the river, I think, so. He's not supposed to have a lot of, uh, sevens and that kind of stuff.
Yas says it enough.
Yeah, you can bet the, yeah, me, yeah. Uh, maybe I don't play deep stacking off.
How big do we blast this?
I wanted to have it in, in, in two, so twenty six is the minimum, I bet. And maybe even forty three.
Ah, it's forty two.
It's just.
We can just.
It's a sliver.
Just jamming.
Yeah.
Getting it in two.
Does he have pocket deuce?
Yes, he does.
Yes, he does.
We're in a setup. He has like jacks.
Eight, seven, sevens, nines.
The way he raised the turn after we bet forty three big lines and we never win here.
No, but he just doesn't like call, like. It's a lot.
He could have jacks, could have tens, he could have nines.
I agree, jacks, tens, he could have spades for bluff.
He doesn't do that, I think.
A weird bluff because.
Sevens doesn't do that, don't be dumb.
Don't be silly, Yas.
Don't be silly, Louis, of course sevens does that.
Oh, no, I think what.
Maybe just a sliver, I don't know.
We're gonna wrap it up on this, thanks a lot for watching, everybody, if you're not. Already a member, join our Discord, if you're not already subscribed to our channel, subscribe to it. Uh, join us, come study with us and see you guys around.